Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. This meeting of the City Planning Commission will begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as an advisory board to the City Council. It is the responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendations on land use and zoning matters. Actions taken tonight on conditional use permits are final unless appealed to the City Council in writing within five days. Any recommendations made on preliminary subdivision plan requests tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the third council meeting of this month, or at the first council meeting of the next month if associated with a rezoning or major amendment. Any recommendations made on rezoning requests, major amendments, future land use amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the City Council for final action at the first council meeting of next month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the Commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the Planning Commission apply the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Second, planning staff recommends approval of the request. Third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the Sioux Falls zoning ordinance. By approving the consent agenda, the Commission is approving the items on consent. Therefore, upon approval of the agenda, those members of the public in attendance for those items are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed for each item. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on that item. Second, the petitioner or representative will be requested to come forward to make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner has spoken, anyone from the audience who wishes to address the agenda item shall be recognized. Then the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission move to the podium microphone and identify themselves for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask that you either turn off or please silence your electronic devices. This meeting is being televised on CityLink and will be rebroadcast Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 10:00 AM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I would like to emphasize a couple of items. First, please silence all your cell phones. In an effort to have sufficient time to hear from audience members, we ask that when you come to the podium, please identify yourself and state your address for the records. Limit your comments to five minutes and please ensure you are delivering new testimony to the commissioners. At this time, we will approve the consent agenda. Denise, could you please read the items on the consent agenda, one through fifteen?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item one, approval of June 1st, 2016 minutes of regular meeting. Item two, June Platts. Item three, 4722, 2016, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District for allowed forms located at 810 South 10th Avenue. Item four, 4746, 2016, rezoned from the O Office District to the C In Conservation District for allowed forms located south of West 5th Street and east of North Marion Road. Item five, 4846, 2016, rezoned from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District for allowed forms located at 715-721 West 13th Street. Item six, 4847, 2016, rezoned from the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District to the LW Live Work District for allowed forms located at 301 South Prairie Avenue. Item seven, 4848, 2016, rezoned from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the S1 General Institutional District for allowed forms located at 421 West 7th Street. Item eight, 4849, 2016, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located at 1215 East 28th Street. Item nine, 4851, 2016, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District for allowed forms located at 3301 North Aurora Circle. Item ten, 4867, 2016, rezoned from the O Office District to the C3 Commercial Community District for allowed forms located at 5000 West 26th Street. Item eleven, 4868, 2016, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the O Office District for allowed forms located at 2109 South Silverthorn Avenue. Item twelve, 4871, 2016, rezoned from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District for allowed forms located at 2101 South Euclid Avenue. Item thirteen, 4873, 2016, rezoned from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District for allowed forms located at the northeast corner of West 24th Street and South Spring Avenue. Item fourteen, 4777, 2016, preliminary subdivision plan for Sycamore Springs addition located at the southwest corner of South Sycamore Avenue and East 61st Street. Item fifteen, 4874, 2016, preliminary subdivision plan for South Cliff Grasslands addition located at north of East 85th Street, south of proposed Veterans Parkway, and west of South Cliff Avenue.
Thank you, Denise. Are there any objections from the audience on items one through fifteen?
Scott Ersmann, 806 South 10th Avenue. I'd like to see item number three polled. I have some questions about it.
Okay, thank you.
Should I just wait?
Are there any other objections to anything on the consent agenda? Are there any objection?
Craig Gow, 2107 South Euclid. If I could see the planning again because we missed a slideshow for item twelve.
You just need to see the slideshow?
It's kind of hard to make an objection or not when I didn't see the actual plan of the plot, so, thank you.
Can you bring that up again for us? Jason, please? Are there any objection? Would you like us to pull it then? Are you okay with it?
I'm okay with it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any objections from the commissioners on any items one through fifteen?
My understanding is that some of the neighbors are here for item eleven, so we may want to pull that from consent onto regular agenda.
All right, item eleven?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Any other objections? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. Okay, now we have a request to move items three and eleven to the regular agenda. So I'll look for a motion to approve items, moving, to approve moving items three and eleven to the regular agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, now we have a vote on the amendment. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. We need a vote on it. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Now we'll vote on the consent agenda as amendment, as amended with items three and eleven moving to the regular agenda. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Denise, could you read item number three, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item three, 4722, 2016.
Excuse me. I need a motion to approve the regular agenda adding items three and eleven.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes, regular agenda passes. If you are here for items one through fifteen, except for three and eleven, you are free to go. Thank you, Denise.
Yes, item three, 4722, 2016, rezoned from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District for allowed forms located at 810 South 10th Avenue.
Staff?
Hello, my name is Sophie Johnson. I'm the Planning and Building Services intern for the summer, so bear with me. The property in question is at 810 South 10th Avenue. And the purpose, it is desired to be a new home construction, and that's why they're attempting to get the rezone. City staff analyzed this parcel, and we rated it a three for potential incompatibility out of a scale of one to five, five being the most compatible because adjacent properties were commercial. Additionally, city staff looked at any water, policing, fire, zoning, sewer or drainage concerns, and there wasn't any, and it's currently vacant.
Okay, any questions of commissioners for staff? Thank you, Sophie.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Applicant maybe too.
Applicant first.
Excuse me. Oh, is the applicant here?
Oh.
Could you please come forward?
Yeah, Dan Parker. He's the owner of the land.
Anything to add on this, what you're gonna do?
I've just, there's not, with the zoning, there's not enough room to build anything on it unless I change it to this, so I can spread the frontage to the side so they have room to build on it, otherwise it's just not usable.
Okay.
The only reason I'm doing it.
All right, any questions from the commissioners of the petitioner? Thank you. Now, is there anyone from the audience that'd like to speak on this?
I was gonna ask him to stay up here, just have a couple of questions for him. I, um, I support the rezone. I live one house in between, there's a house in between me, I live at 806, and this is 810. And he actually owns the house, the rental home. And he actually owns the house, the rental home next to the empty lot. There was a house there at one time, it burned down a few years ago, it's probably been four or five years. But I just have a couple of questions for him. Is there actually gonna be a house built there if this gets rezoned?
Yes, that's a question.
Oh, is your, okay. Because I didn't know if that, because I had called the planning office and they weren't certain what was gonna be done. And then, is that house gonna be sold to a individual or is it gonna be a rental?
It'll be a rental at first.
And there's also a garage, it doesn't really show up on the, if you go back to just his hand drawing there, over there, there's a garage there. I'm just wondering if it's gonna be torn down because it's really ramshackle, it looks really bad. The roof on it's good and the structure's probably good, but there's no paint on it anymore, it's, paint's almost all the way off the siding. So I'm just wondering if that's gonna be torn down or repainted or fixed or something.
It'll have the siding redone.
Okay, okay, that's all I had. Otherwise, I, I support it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else from the audience like to speak on this? Seeing none, commissioners, any discussion?
Move for approval, item three.
Second. Any discussion? I need a motion, I got a motion to approve and deny, or to approve, excuse me. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
Item 11, 4868 2016 rezone from the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District to the O Office District for allowed forms located at 2109 South Silverthorn Avenue.
Good evening, Diane Decoyer with Planning Staff. The applicant for this petition is Del Waltner with Sport Game. He's requesting a rezone for the 3.65 acre site. It is northwest of South Silverthorn Avenue and South Schaefer Avenue and east of Veterans Memorial, excuse me, Veterans Parkway. The site is currently vacant. The applicant intends to rezone the property to construct a private recreational facility and daycare. To the north of this site is existing office and commercial development. To the east is existing RD1 Twin Home Duplex and, excuse me, and RS Single Family Residential. To the south is an existing drainage way and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, and to the west is Veterans Parkway, and across that is vacant land. A Level A buffer yard is required along the south and east where adjacent to the AD1 form. A Level A buffer yard requires a two-foot berm or a four-foot fence required within the buffer yard and 20 units of landscaping for each 100 lineal feet. We do have a comment from fire in agency review. They noted that the fire access must be maintained per the 2015 International Fire Code for the proposed development. If the rezoning of this property is approved, the applicant can utilize the property with one of the office forms such as NF1 and can be developed to construct the recreational facility and daycare. If the rezoning is denied, the parcel will continue to be rezoned as RD1 for Twin Home and Duplex Residential. Because the subject application is consistent with the shape of Sioux Falls Comprehensive Plan, staff recommends approval for this rezone. One of the stipulations for the BCF1 form for this requires a 412 roof pitch and also brick siding when it's adjacent to DD form, so it's compatible to the adjacency. And I can answer any questions you have, and I do believe the petitioner is here as well to answer questions.
Commissioners, you got any questions of staff on this item?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Diane, is this going to have access only from Schaefer Avenue to this property?
Can you flip back to the other? It's a little bit deceiving, but yeah, Schaefer and then probably going all the way up to 26 would be the preferred route for anybody coming to this site rather than going all the way down through Silverthorn Avenue.
Correct, but to access this particular lot will only be from Schaefer, there won't be anything from Highway 11?
No, nothing from Highway 11, just where Jason indicated on South Schaefer Avenue, there would be an access point.
Thank you.
Any other ques-- any other questions from commissioners? Thank you Diane. Is the petitioner here?
Hi, Del Waltner, 2201 South Coppercrest Trail with Sport Games. Not sure I have a whole lot to add other than what was in the forms already, so I'd be available for any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the commissioners of the petitioner?
I have one, why this location has compared to another?
For approximately 15 years, we've been trying to find some land that was more reasonably priced, and that has kept escalating over all those years. And we had tried to do it just outside Sioux Falls. We found out that when we were in the planned development area of the city, that wasn't working. We had some other areas that we thought were gonna work, and then all of a sudden those fell through too. And when we started looking at this area, we felt like because there was already C2 and Office zoning right immediately to the north of that, that this would be a good fit into that area to rezone it to Office at that point in time. We've also been told it's an absolutely excellent area for a daycare center because there isn't anything in that immediate area and it's surrounded by residential in that area. Our intent on this is to spare no expense when we're building the building so that we can make it fit into that neighborhood. The people that are intending on doing the daycare are neighbors in Copper Creek. I'm a neighbor in Copper Creek, I built my home seven years ago. This is something that we want to do on a neighborly basis and try and explain it to the people as best as we can. I had reached out to the five clients that I have that are in that immediate area along Silverthorn and had talked to them about it, sent them some advance notice, but I didn't have the ability to do that with everyone. I kind of wish I had, or if we'd have been able to put out a sign or something that said contact me if you had issues, that would have been welcomed as well too.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
Good evening, Dean Dizik, 6317 East River Rock Circle, Phase 1 of Copper Creek Edition. First and foremost, I'm all for economic development in Sioux Falls. I fully support anyone that has a dream and is willing to invest their hard-earned capital. However, there's a right place for development and there's a wrong place for development. Having experience in this area, I firmly believe this rezone request does not properly fit the neighborhood and the initial intent and vision of Copper Creek. I spoke to Mike Van Buskirk yesterday to confirm if he was aware of this specific project. Mike said that he and his brother Steve were aware, along with Ryan Janza, Residential Development Manager for the Van Buskirk Companies. The applicant approached Van Buskirk Companies to get their approval. All were in agreement that they would not publicly support this project due to compatibility and the original intent and overall aesthetics of Phase 1 of Copper Creek neighborhood. In their opinion, the building would be too large for the proposed location as well as the applicant's uncertainty of finished material. I referenced Phase 1 of Copper Creek a couple times specifically because the only residents that would be negatively affected in Copper Creek would be 65 single housing residents, many who are here tonight. The attraction for most of us in this residential neighborhood centers around the idea of privacy and little traffic on the edge of Sioux Falls. The only reason someone would enter Phase 1 is because they live there or are visiting someone there. The applicant lives in Phase 2 of Copper Creek. He and all other in Phase 2 will never have the, have to deal with the newly created congestion and safety issues that this business will create in a residential neighborhood. A recreational center along with the daycare will create a huge increase in traffic in and out of the addition, as was referenced coming in on Schaefer. Leaving in the morning and trying to make a left onto 26th Street is a challenge, to say the least, with all the Brandon and Iowa commuters entering Sioux Falls. I can't imagine if and when a daycare is located, how this will impact that issue. Even with that being said, I'm more concerned about the children in the neighborhood. It's not uncommon to see multiple families with children walking or riding bikes on Schaefer or Silverthorn. I understand your initial approval was based on zoning of Office to the north. This had been done because the property sits adjacent to 26th Street. As a development, the right, right way to go about is to continue the trend of zoning down as you get closer to the residential housing. This was consistent in the master plan of Van Buskirk Companies. This proposed rezoned, rezoning granted only 3.65 acres will set a precedent, a precedent for opportunities to attempt to rezone to this classification. We didn't invest in our homes to be potentially surrounded by an Office Park. My initial comments touched upon the right kind of development. Master planning is crucial to a well-thought-out development that suits both residential and commercial. I did a little research, there's 18 acres of existing zoned Office land available within a quarter to a half mile of this proposed site. In addition, there's plenty of more availability Office land near Veterans Parkway and 41st Street or in the Foss Field Development to the north. These sites offer a master plan that suits this project. There truly is no need to locate this business in an established residential neighborhood who the initial planners verified was not a fit. I would sincerely ask that you oppose the applicant's request to rezone this parcel of land.
Excuse me, Mr. Resnick, stay, would you stay up here, please? Any questions from the commissioners for Mr. Resnick?
Dizik.
Dizik, okay.
Well-thought-out comments, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, no questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this item?
My name is Andy Wensy. My family and I reside at 6308 East River Rock Circle, so adjacent to the Zizik family. Like to just point out, if you can note here on the item, that 26th Street going east is unimproved, so essentially a rural road without curb and gutter, without sidewalks that extends certainly through Schaefer where we have curb and gutter, but as you can see there, barely, no sidewalk. And so, as parents of two young children who are often on their bicycles, that's the best access they have to get out onto some of the country roads, we're able to ride without much traffic. And we do that as a family of four, with lights and all the things we can to include safety. Simply said, the existing Office structures that are developed to the north are very small Office buildings, and you see marketing offices, you see a small investment company, you see a bank, but very little traffic coming through there as it exists today. That said, just about every morning, trying to go west from Schaefer on to East 26th Street is dangerous and many times something we try to avoid by going down Silverthorn to 33rd, which, as you can imagine, is less than convenient. The largest issues we have are, one, that additional traffic. You've all been around, or two daycares, seen an apple tree on 26th Street perhaps, where traffic is coming in and out very quickly on those key times. And granted, they're very small times, but those are also the times that we're hoping to access and to exit our own homes in our own neighborhood. Having that type of impact in that intersection in particular, I think, is particularly dangerous. Going across, if we were to look at 33rd, there is a blind corner there, so people like to avoid that one as Phases 2, 3, and 4 of Copper Creek continue to expand and puts more traffic into that 33rd and Veterans Parkway intersection, really causing a lot of, in my opinion, unsafe compacting of traffic. Beyond that, when you consider both the duplicative impact of a daycare and a mixed-use facility, where Mr. Waltner has indicated that he hopes to have teams practicing, we've seen a lot of impact at other facilities that teams coming and going, there is an overlap, and I'm simply concerned that there aren't enough parking spots planned with the current renderings to accommodate even one team with the sport size courts that he has included there, let alone multiple. And the concern secondarily there would be that parallel parking along Schaefer and Silverthorn would be an attractive alternative if I myself were a parent looking to get in and out of that facility quickly. So purely aside from those two things, the aesthetics, which I think have been nicely addressed and we're eager to see that should this continue, but beyond that, I think, having this been posted June 25th, we tried to pull a group together very quickly, even over a holiday weekend, trying to have some consideration of Mr. Waltner's preliminary comments that he graciously provided for us early on. And I think we just wanted to make sure that there was enough time for you as a body to consider the potential traffic impacts, for you to think about the cultural impacts on our neighborhood, considering that the Greenway there and the green spaces, Mr. Zizik indicated, is really an attraction for us for calmness and privacy, something that we want to retain in our neighborhood, and we just don't think that the traffic that comes in for this type of business is appropriate or additive to the lifestyles that we've sought there, so.
Any questions for Mr. Wensy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
My name's Randy Joyce. I live at 2068 South Abbey Stone Court, a little corner odd-shaped lot which would be directly across from where this property is proposed. My wife and I moved there and built a home about a year and a half ago. Came from a small town in South Dakota, lived there many years. There wasn't a lot of planning and organization to what happened in our little town, saw a lot of conflict related to neighbors doing this and neighbors doing that without approval. So when we researched, and we researched for over two years before we moved, and now we've been here a year and a half, and saw what was planned and said, you know, that's where we'd like to be. And, and so, in keeping with that, we went together and put together this planned home. And so, when I start looking at the need to create potential conflict, which there will be, I can assure you, if you, if you approve this, when there doesn't need to be any conflict and they have a place to go, it's about money, he said that. There are other locations, if the business will work elsewhere, then money should support that, if it's that great an idea. So that's coming from a person who lives directly across the street, looking at what would be, in my estimation, probably, don't know what Mr. Waltner would say, but probably a metal building of some sort, which is typical of gymnasiums, looking directly across at what I see now, where nice Office buildings with windows, nice pitched roofs, look much like everything else in the residential area. So I would respectfully request that you simply deny this request and put it, and put it to bed, and there won't be any of that potential conflict. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Joyce from the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience?
Good evening, Kyle Johnson. My wife and I live at 2108 South Silverthorn. This is projected address 2109. Four years ago, four years ago, my wife and I spent a few years looking for a place we wanted to live in Sioux Falls. Spent a lot of time doing it, looked at the surrounding areas, looked at Copper Creek, understood the developers, their plans, put a lot of thought into it. What a disappointment this would be for us if this came in, safety-wise for the children, people that plan their whole life where they want to live, how they want to retire. I don't think it's the right fit for our neighborhood. That's all I have.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience with any new testimony?
Hi, I'm Leanne Schwabach, and I live at 2001 Abbey Stone Court, so it would be coming around Schaefer and coming around the first lot. So the back of my house will overlook it. What my concerns are, if that was zoned for an Office building and it becomes a Sports Zone, what are the hours going to be for this facility and how is the lighting gonna affect the aesthetics of our neighborhood? Is it, parking lot lights gonna be on all night? Is it gonna be open till 10 or 11 at night? That will directly shine on all of the homes on Abbey Stone Court and all of the homes that come down Silverthorn. We've been there, we built five different homes in the city. We wanted to live there because of the privacy. We had a choice to go to Phase 2, and that we knew was gonna be 200 to 300 homes. We knew Abbey Stone Court was multi-housing on that west side and individual homes on the right side, all around Abbey Stone Court. There's a creek that runs through there, and then our mailboxes are currently on that property, which is a big facility with all these keys and you have to get into it. We do not have access for our mail at our home. So I have questions for him, where's that mailbox gonna go? It's right at the curve, and you come around Schaefer, and that is a really sharp curve. And if you meet traffic coming and going... And if you meet traffic coming and going, it's terrible. People don't break even up the circle where the office buildings are. When I come home at night at 5:30, you have to watch like crazy because people are coming in and out of the circle, and if you add another 50 to 100 kids trying to drive out of there on one exit, it will be a nightmare. And I do not want to see something like that built in Phase One. Maybe it can go in Phase Two where he lives, you know, because I don't want it.
Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Schwabach?
Thank you.
Anyone else? New testimony?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the traffic situation that we experienced about two, three years ago, when the... My name is Marla Deesick. I'm at 6317 East River Rock Circle, sorry about that. When they put in the road 33rd Street, we saw increased traffic because there, the church, the covenant, First Covenant or the Covenant Church right up on the hill on Veterans Parkway, and that was just one day a week, and we really had to watch the kids. My kids are grown, but it's, there's a lot of little kids in that neighborhood, and just that Sunday traffic. So I don't know if there's been any traffic studies done, but before this would be even considered, I would highly encourage, if it is even considered, that a traffic study is done, because I think there's great risk for our children. Thank you.
Any questions from commissioners? Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
I'm not sure if this is newer business than what we've just been talking about, but my name is Kathy Swenson, and I live at 2204 South Silverthorn Avenue. Eight years ago, my husband and I moved to this area. There were eight or nine families that lived there, and there were maybe 14 houses built. It's always been a very quiet, very beautiful, very peaceful neighborhood, and that's why we chose it. Our boys were grown, so we didn't have little children. My main concern is the traffic that we've all talked about. Schaefer is the entrance and the exit for the sports zone, I've been told. There are many mornings I leave for work, 7:15, 7:30, and I sit and wait and wait and wait for traffic from the east. A lot of Brandon people, a lot of Iowa people, even in the evening now, the casino people will travel that road, 26th Street, so it gets really busy out there in the evenings also. When we moved there, it was very peaceful, very quiet. There are 65 homes there. We have two, three phases now, so it's really changed a lot, but one thing that hasn't changed in that area has been the peace and the beauty. And that's why I think a lot of us chose, you know, to live there. We live on the Greenway, we have animals all over. We would hope that it could stay that way, so I hope you don't approve this. Thank you.
Excuse me, any questions for Mrs. Swenson? Thank you. Anyone else from the audience?
Eric Eli, 2201 South Silverthorn. We recently moved to Copper Creek, and to reiterate a lot of the testimony already, one of the things we really looked at is the neighborhood, and we moved to this location because of the proposed planning for the Good Samaritan Village, and I really think that, you know, if it would have been zoned as office space with a recreational facility, I would not have purchased my house at that location, and I just want to be on record that I object as well to the rezoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else from the audience has any new testimony? With that, testimony's closed. I need a motion to approve for discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Do we want to let the applicant address any of the commentary from the audience, or?
If you would like him to speak, yeah, we can ask him back up. Do you have any other questions for him?
I think there were a number of questions thrown out there. I didn't know if he wanted to address any of those.
Yeah, we, you know, the comments that we were going to build a steel building and all those kinds of things, that's, first of all, when you're looking at the BCF-1 forms, which is what we would be going under, they have all kinds of stipulations as to what they have to look like to do that. I agree, everybody would love to keep these as vacant lots next to them, but that's not how development works. And as far as Van Buskirk's go, I think it's kind of funny that they're the ones that will go in and do all kinds of different things in different areas and promise things. I myself was promised some things about where my home was built and the Greenway that was beside me as well as behind me, and then all of a sudden, as soon as it came time to do that, then they just threw up their hands and said, oh, no, that's not going to happen. So, you know, I've had all kinds of things from them that have come back to me, too. On the other side of that, they're the ones that sold the land to Good Samaritan in the first place, and that area that's zoned RA-2, you're looking at a relatively small area that's RD-1, and where it's showing you below the yellow RD-1 right now and in the lighter color, that is deceiving, because three-fourths of that is drainage easement, okay? So that's not zoned RD-1, it's actually a drainage easement that's about 100 to 150 feet, right, in that area, which leaves only about 80 feet that's actually zoned RD-1 along that very edge. And the rest of it is RA-2, which means that you're looking at medium-density apartments that can be three stories high and 45 feet tall. So, you know, our building is not going to sit up. In fact, what's going to happen is you're going to see the roofs of those office buildings on the hill above that area, because our building, in order to get into the flat area, is going to be set down into the ground five to eight feet minimum, and we're still trying to figure out some of that as we go along right now, which means that the size of the building is going to appear to be much smaller than what it is. And with the multiple roof lines that we have on there, it's not going to be one big building. We've got, I can show some of the things. We have a very rough one right now, nothing has been decided yet, and, but I can show And so, this is what, again, just a concept, we're talking about putting a traditional roof on it with shingles, we're talking about siding or some other kind of side finishes. The BCF-1 requires that you put brick on the side of it up to a certain height to meet those zoning requirements. It requires all kinds of landscaping, all of the other things, too. So with this, again, I don't think that that looks like a steel building. I'm a farm boy, I grew up on a farm, I know what those look like, and have even built them myself, so. As far as the traffic goes, back to the other things that we were talking about before, when you start adding twin homes, you're talking about the potential for, what, four, six, eight people in each twin home? Because you're talking about a double living standard. If you start putting, and most of those are on lots that aren't very wide. So if you start putting all of those people along that area and all the way along the Greenway area, and you fill up that 3.65 acres with as many twin homes as you can in there, you're going to end up with a lot of traffic. And I don't see why it's necessary for people, if they're trying to get out on 26th Street, it's very, very simple to go down Silverthorn, hit 33rd, and make a right turn on Veterans Parkway, and then merge into wherever else you want to go on 26th Street. I mean, I do it all the time, so, and that's doing all kinds of different things at different times of the day. So I'm not trying to say that there isn't going to be some more traffic. There's going to be more traffic, but that also comes with development, and especially if you've, if you're loading up those areas in the RA-2 with medium-density apartments.
Mr. Chair.
Ma'am, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Can you go back to the rendering? The one that the applicant put up?
Oh, the building, that one there.
Can you just clarify, you are saying that the entire exterior of the building will be brick?
No, probably not, but we're going to do it to the BC...
To the BCF requirements, though, so there will be no metal exterior. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Right, no, no metal exterior. That's our intention right now, and that's what we're planning on doing. It'd be regular siding, or I don't know if we'll do some drive-in or what, but...
And then also, you know, this board focuses on land use, and the one question I had was, when you say private recreational facility, can you go into a little bit more detail as to what that exactly means?
Sure. You know, originally, we were hoping that it was going to be something more on a community center-type basis, where we could actually invite people. Some of the amenities that were planned in there were a series of rooms where people could come in and hold their birthday parties or anniversaries, all of those kinds of things. We would have golf and hunting simulators in it, and rooms that would be flexible to be bigger or smaller. The daycare part is a part that actually helped finance this part, because now we had some usage during the day that would help, and normally, facilities like this, that's where they have problems making it, is because they don't have that consistent daytime revenue that's coming through there. As far as people coming and going and overlapping, that's why we have two different entrances. What you really don't see on this one is that the one, as we call it, the sports entrance, is where that's located now, but the other entrance is on the far side, and that's the daycare entrance. So we've split that so that when people are coming in, we have some decent traffic flow that comes in and out through that area. And I'm sorry, I may not have answered all your questions, Andy. You were talking about...
Just, I was curious as to when you said private recreational facility, you're going, you could potentially rent it out to people for parties and have...
Right. Actually, just today, I had somebody that says he has six softball teams and five baseball teams, and he wanted to know, he wanted to lock in a price now for the facility. Every other time that we've tried to come up with something like this, the same thing has happened just by word of mouth, that people have said that there is a real need for this type of facility in that area. And like I mentioned previously, the daycare center is meant to be in a neighborhood where it's convenient for those people to drop off their kids and go. The one thing that I have to admit that I'm pretty surprised about is that I've always offered a discount for any neighbors that lived in Phase One and Phase Two, and many of the people that were here tonight received those discounts. So I've tried to be a good neighbor. It's also, when we're talking about renting out these facilities, the intention was to do the same thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have a question for Diane.
Thank you, Diane. That's okay.
Yes.
Yeah, could you talk about some of the unknowns with regards to parking, and if this is rezoned, what are the forms that could come subsequently if the sports zone and the daycare would go away or cease to operate?
Do you want to handle this, Jeff? I don't have all of that.
Jeffrey Schmidt, representing planning staff this afternoon. In an all-office district, the standard form, the primary form, is the BCF-1 form, and that's what he's been talking about. Secondary to that, you could do an NF-1, which is a neighborhood facility, form, which would basically be a church, as well as you could do an RE-1, limited retail, which is up to 5,000 square foot store. And then you said other standards, or just, was it just the forms?
I think he was talking in regards to parking standards. How much parking would they be required to have?
Any of the forms, the forms, the structures themselves will then be based upon the square footage of the structure, and then that's how much parking you're going to, has to be basically supplied. So when they come into a building permit and they say this is the size of structure, then we do an equation for, based on the size of that structure, you have to supply so much parking. So then they'd have to meet those minimum standards. Sometimes they come up and have more, they meet more than the minimums, but they have to meet the minimum standards for parking.
And Mr. Chair, Jeff, in your opinion, this meets those minimum standards with the, again, the private recreational facility that is attached to the daycare?
That's correct. And again, we would continue to enforce that as they come through the building permits. They'd have to meet our standards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Jeff, as I look at the north end of Silverthorn, it's called South Bill Drive...
Yes.
And that looks like a driveway, not a street.
Correct.
This diagram seems to indicate that, you know, it's a pair of streets, and seems like that would be a good pressure relief for traffic, but as it is currently a driveway, I assume that is, what is kind of the timeframe of that conversion, or do you know anything about that?
Yes, I do. So this area is not annexed in the city of Sioux Falls. Split Rock to the north is not annexed in the city of Sioux Falls. Either is the rural residential on the south side of 26th Street. That is why 26th Street is not improved, is because these properties are not annexed in the city of Sioux Falls. So the existing rural residential homes that Jason's highlighted there or shown there, they have their driveways to Bill Drive. Once they come in for redevelopment, then Bill Drive goes away. So what's going to happen then is those developments, whether they're twin homes, townhomes, apartments, offices, they'll turn on to Bill Drive and come into the neighborhood, and they'll no longer have access to 26th Street. And everything will come back through onto Silverthorn and go up to Schaefer. Schaefer will be the main access.
Silverthorn never goes up to 26th and connects. Oh, okay.
No, Bill Drive terminates. Right now, they get to use it as a driveway, but then it goes away once those land areas develop.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Jeff, can you explain a little bit about lighting?
Sure. Outside lighting, we have standards in our ordinance that say that lighting has to be downcast, okay? It's a technical term, but it seems to make a lot of sense. It has to be downcast, it has to be shining down on your property, and it cannot have trespassers spill over onto adjacent sites. Now, again, I'm not a lighting expert, engineers have to do that. So you will have some ambient light, people will go, well, that looks like it's spilling over, but we have light meters, and we go out there and we look at where the light is on the site, and if it comes and trespasses off the site onto other properties. So they are able to have outside lights that would not trespass onto their properties. So that's how they would do parking lot lights, and they have to be a certain height, and they'd have to be downcast, and they have to have filters on them. You know, if they have a cul-de-sac, if they have a court there, they'd have street lights also on them, but it would be different if it was a parking lot. They'd probably have more lights.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, can you address parking? As far as how much is required for a facility like this?
Just in regards that they'd have to meet minimum standards. At this point, with a BCF-1, it's typically coming in as an office zone, but we really, we don't know yet until they come in with the structure size. So when the structure size comes in for an office district, or if the structure size comes in for a recreation facility, we'll look at that structure size, and they'll have to meet the minimum standards for it. So not the equation itself. It's based on that structure size.
Any more questions, Mr. Chair?
Jeff, would you comment about the original zoning in regards to that representing a master plan for development and the proposal now to alter that?
Yes, you can see, this is the original master plan that they brought in. Typically, how developments take place in the city of Sioux Falls, and this one's typical, that at the junction of every intersection, 26th Street and High 11, they have an employment center, they have commercial development at the junction of their two access points. So here, they go over to Schaefer, and that's as far as the commercial office has to go, and then they can go as further south as their next access point. So again, when you look at that exhibit, they don't have another access point, but that's how far the commercial development would go. When you look across the street, that land hasn't developed, but when they had an access point, they would be able to go as further south as their access point. That's how big the intersection goes. If it wasn't Schaefer and their access was at Bill, the commercial would go all the way over. It goes to those access drives. So then, I think the neighbors even got up and said, and then you trans... So, then, the app, I think the neighbors even got up and said, and then you transition, you go from commercial and office to apartments, twin homes, single family. Here, they went and they had commercial office straight to R D, and then along the highway, since it doesn't have access, that's where they put all of their apartments. And they put all their apartments along the highway, Veterans Parkway. And even as it's zoned apartments, then they sold all that apartment land to Good Samaritan. So, with Good Samaritan, it could be apartments, it could be assisted living, it could be offices, it could be, that's up to Good Samaritan to come in here and do their master plan for what they're gonna do with that land. And then, I think someone asked earlier, Kurt was saying, does it go out onto Schaefer? Is it gonna have access on Highway 11? All of the land along Highway 11, Veterans Parkway, will not access to the west. It always goes internal to the neighborhood.
Any more questions for staff? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners, from anybody else? All right, with that, testimony is closed, now I need a motion to approve for discussion. So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Well, at first glance, having, uh, office adjacent to two small office parcels seems to be a reasonable transition. But as I look closer at it, and think about kind of, you know, some of the issues of encroachment upon, uh, some neighborhoods, and yes, this isn't an established neighborhood, but portions of it are, I think I'm a little less, um, comfortable with this particular shift. Uh, I think, as I think about the R D one and the R S that are very close to this, uh, location, and the fact that, uh, especially Bill Drive will never reconnect, so there isn't really a, kind of a relief access. Uh, the shift to O, in my mind, is not a comfortable one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. I think we got a little bit into the weeds, and to echo maybe some of what Sean said. We're looking at a rezone, should be straight land use, as does office, or should office go next to other office, commercial, and twin home? Um, and I guess I take a little different view than Sean, I, I don't see it as a, a big issue at all, because that's, like, again, like Jeff said, that's how the transition goes, the commercial, office, apartments, twin homes, and so on. Um, so it seems to flow with what happens kind of all over the city. And I, I think some of the discussion that centered around what was gonna get built in the office, or at least the proposed plan now, I think took us off track. Um, so, this one I'm gonna support.
Seems like that's relevant, though, to the, uh, consideration for what we're being asked to do. And I would agree with Sean that it's, it's introducing something that, you know, wasn't contemplated, and it has a lot of variables that aren't under one single jurisdiction. And that's part of my concern as well, is where something like this goes. We know there's a neighborhood there, and, and there's plans for that to continue to develop. Not sure we know how this all turns out, otherwise.
But, Mr. Chair, I think we do also have to remember, um, that is our job, we are a land use board, and that's what we have to look at, and if that land use and the transitions do make sense, that's what this board is here to do, and, um, so I, I would have to agree with Nick.
My only concern is that, um, as one of the people that testified, is that there wasn't a lot of time or opportunity for the developer to have a neighborhood meeting, um, as, uh, people have done in the past when there's been a controversial project to kind of work out some of those issues and answer some of the questions. So, this is their first opportunity to, um, bring some of these issues to, um, to light with the developer, as well as with, um, with us, so, um, so that's my concern.
Any more comments, any? With that, if there's no more, uh, discussion, uh, all in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed, same sign?
Yes.
Um, we'll have to do raise a hands. Uh, all in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? Motion fails. Item sixteen, Denise, please?
Item sixteen, forty-eight fifty, twenty sixteen, rezoned from the R T one, single-family residential traditional district, to the C two, commercial neighborhood and streetcar district, for loud forms located at seven twenty-four East Eighth Street.
Staff, report, please.
Okay, so this is actually a city-initiated rezone request, and the reason?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, this is a city-initiated rezone request, and the reason, um, city staff is asking you to consider rezoning this area is because, um, it is actually on two parcels, and, um, it's all, it's, it's one property, but they're two different zones. Um, one is R T one, single-family residential traditional district, and then the other, um, half of the parcel is, um, C two, commercial neighborhood and streetcar district. Um, the, the parking lot is actually on C two, and the building is on R T one. By rezoning, it would unify this parcel, and that's why it's on the regular agenda, as opposed to the consent agenda, because it is just a little bit trickier with the, the two parcels.
Right. Uh, any questions from commissioners of staff? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the city is the petitioner.
Planning department is the petitioner, so.
Are there any other petitioners here?
I'm following it too much. Uh, do we have anyone from the audience that would like to discuss this?
Uh, Stephen Fletcher, two-two-six North Franklin Avenue, so I'm literally right across the street from this. I have a question, and go up two houses, that's me. My question about this is, uh, your aerial photograph here is out of date. Uh, what you've highlighted is a steel building that was, uh, built on the property. Uh, the lot to the north of that, the garage exists, circle, yeah, what you're pointing, yeah, what you just exiled was torn down. And my question is, uh, since the planning board, you're saying, uh, these two plats, plots, whatever the right word is, uh, are the same property, and part of it is zoned commercial, and part of it is zoned residential. For my own clarification, what are you trying to rezone, uh, the lot that the warehouse is on, or the vacant lot?
The parcel to the north that I believe the gentleman is questioning is already C two. Um, the one with the building that's highlighted in bold, that is R T one. So, um, and so is the parcel to the south. So, um, it's just kind of awkward, because there's an R T one, single-family, uh, parcel in between two commercial zones.
So, to answer your question, it's the center lot that they're trying to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, no objection on my part, done.
Thank you. Anyone else from the audience? I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, same sign? Motion passes.
Item seventeen, forty-eight seventy, twenty sixteen, rezoned from the R D one, twin-home duplex residential suburban district, to the C two, commercial neighborhood and streetcar district, for loud forms located at eighteen hundred West Forty-first Street.
Uh, Jason Beaver, representing Planning and Building Services. Uh, this is an application by Will City Auto. It is located at the northwest corner of West Forty-first Street and South Glendale Avenue. The applicant, uh, is proposing to rezon roughly point eight acres from the twin home to the C two, commercial district. Uh, the applicant then does intend to redevelop the entire site, uh, the existing Will City Motor Auto site, as well as demolishing two existing single-family homes. Um, and then they will construct, as you can see here, a new building, employee parking and display area will be on the construction site. Um, the south portion of this site, uh, currently contains, uh, Will City Auto's display area. Um, and then the north portion of this, as you can see in there, is two existing single-family homes. Uh, the concept plan does indicate the required ten-foot front yard setbacks off of the three streets. Um, they are indicating the building there in the center, uh, east portion of the lot, uh, adjacent to Glendale Avenue. Uh, and they are proposing roughly, uh, seven visitor, eleven employee, and, and fifty-seven vehicle display spaces. Uh, the required buffer yard, uh, level C buffer yard is required along that north property line. Um, they have indicated that on this concept plan. That does include a twenty-foot, uh, buffer yard, uh, four-foot, uh, fence and two-foot berm, and, uh, forty units of landscaping for every one hundred lineal feet. Uh, however, they are not showing the required buffer yard on the east side of the property adjacent to the single-family homes, uh, to the east across Glendale Avenue. Um, this proposed zoning request is, is essentially for two distinct areas of the proposed Will City Auto redevelopment. Um, so we'll kind of go through each area separately. I've kind of highlighted them up here, so we'll start with Area One, which is highlighted kind of in the blue. Area One already contains an existing, the existing Will City, uh, Auto display spaces along with, uh, uh, employee parking. Um, prior to two thousand fourteen, this point three zero acre parcel was previously zoned C two, commercial, under the nineteen eighty-three zoning ordinance, and has been used, uh, for auto, automotive, uh, display and sale since two thousand eleven, when it was, uh, part of Law Motors. Um, because of this proposed redevelopment of this existing Will City Auto site, this point three zero acres, um, needs to be rezoned to the C two to continue to allow them to do use the business as if they're using it today. Um, and since this parcel has util, has been utilized as a motor vehicle sales display area since two thousand eleven, staff does feel that this request does meet, uh, comprehensive criteria within the comprehensive plan, and we can support, uh, the rezoning of Area One. Uh, Area Two is highlighted in red, and there's, uh, it's roughly point five zero acres, and this is currently zoned the R D one, twin-home, uh, district. Uh, and it contains, uh, two single-family house, one in each lot, along with an attached garage. Uh, staff feels that the C two request for this area, um, does not meet the proper land use transitions as indicated in the Shakes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan. Uh, this specific stretch of West Forty-first Street, um, is predominantly commercial use on the first, uh, row of parcels immediately adjacent to West Forty-first Street, with a few commercial areas that stretch farther north, uh, the Kidoba to the west is one. Um, the smaller commercial uses transition north to single-family homes within the R D one district. Um, finally, denial of this request would prevent, uh, future commercial encroachment along the stretch of West Forty-first Street to the existing single-family residential neighborhood to the north. Um, and then we'll kind of just run through some quick scenarios, uh, with the different approvals. The rezoning of these properties, that'd be one and two, are approved, the applicant can demolish the two existing single-family homes within Area Two, and construct, um, redevelop the Will City site as indicated in their concept plan. If the rezoning is approved for Area One, um, and denied for Area Two, uh, Will City Auto can continually utilize this site for motor vehicles, display, and sales, similar to what they utilize it for today. Um, but they cannot, uh, reconstruct and tear down those existing single-family homes to the north. And then finally, is this, if this rezoning is denied for the entire point eight zero acre parcel, Areas One and Two, uh, the two existing single-family homes will remain, and that Area One will continue to be, uh, motor vehicle sales display, but it will be continued to be a non-conforming use within the R D one zoning district. Uh, staff feels the rezoning request of the C two, commercial neighborhood and streetcar district for the property described as the north twenty-two feet of Lot Eight, and the south nineteen point two-five feet of Lot Nine, Block Twelve, uh, Pentagon and Stedman's Edition, and Lot Nine of Block Eleven, Golden Rural subdivision of Pentagon and Stedman's Edition, meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan, and motor vehicle sales already exist on these properties, and staff is recommending approval for Area One, as shown in the blue. However, staff does recommend denial of the property described as the north twenty-four point seven-five feet of Lot Nine, and the south twenty-seven point five feet of Lot Ten, Block Twelve, Pentagon and Stedman's Edition, and Lot Eight, a Block Twelve, Golden Rural subdivision of Pentagon and Stedman's Edition, because it does not meet the proper land use transitions as stated in the Shakes Sioux Falls comprehensive plan, and could, uh, cause future commercial encroachment along this stretch of West Forty-first Street to the existing single-family residential, uh, neighborhood to the north. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
Oh, Jason was a little hard on me. Bruce Nielsen, um, I'm the owner of Will City Auto and the property owner at eighteen hundred West Forty-first Street. So, the purpose of our plan is, um, obviously, site redevelopment. Currently, we're operating out of two office units. This was a car dealership when we purchased it before, it was Law Motors. Uh, there's two separate offices, one was a former flower shop, and the other one was a house that was converted to an office. Um, I think the other one that showed Zone One and Two in the red. Um, yeah, so there's two office units in there that we're operating out of. Uh, both are in need of repair, they're both very old. Uh, the site's due for improvements. Our goal is to combine two buildings into one, and we're also adding employee parking to the site, uh, to get our employees to not park on the street. Uh, we would have less congestion on the lot, it'd be a better customer experience. Our employees would be off the street and parking on the lot. And, um, without a doubt, the, the two houses that we own in Area Two are both vacant. Uh, the one to the west has been vacant for quite some time. Uh, the one to the east needs significant improvements. Uh, if we don't get them improved, then I, I guess rental homes is, is our only choice. But they are, they're an eyesore, to say the least. We did conduct a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday. We had, uh, five different people show up to it. I believe that we've eliminated any concerns. Uh, we have a lighting plan that, that, uh, keeps the lighting downward to not, uh, encroach on any residential homes. Uh, we have a updated landscaping plan, uh, and, um, and we've addressed employee parking to get our employees off the street. Regarding the plan and the staff report, uh, the buffer yard setback on the east side has been corrected, this is the new plan. Uh, that, that was not drawn up properly, so Sayer and Associates changed it. I, I'd also like to point out that if, if you could go back to the, the one that showed, showed Zone, uh, one and two and the, in the red, the, the aerial, yeah. Uh, on, on the east side, that house on the east side that's currently vacant, uh, that, that lot is fifty-eight feet deep. So, when you, when you look at our plan, and we purposely put employee parking on that side, twenty feet of that fifty-eight foot lot is landscape buffer, both on the north and the east side, and then you add another nineteen feet of employee parking, there's nothing left. It's, there's, there's no building, um, there's definitely no encroachment, and we're getting our employees off the street. The, the question that I had on, on the staff report, it, it mentioned, um, access management plan for Forty-first Street shows as access to be removed. I didn't know if that's something that gets addressed during this meeting, or how it affects the zoning request. the zoning request. But I believe not only is it going to enhance the area, it's actually going to make it better, because we're not parking on the street, and we're eliminating two houses that are an eyesore and two structures that are office units that are an eyesore.
Questions for Mr. Neerson? Commissioners? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue?
My name is Corinne Conley, and I own the property immediately north of his proposed area. I know now that there was a meeting. They sent the letter to me in Florida, which sat around down there. They sent it out on the 24th for a meeting on the 28th. By the time it got to Florida, it got to me yesterday, so I knew nothing of this meeting that they had or what was addressed there. I have some concerns and some questions in that my daughter and her family live in that house at this present time, and they have above-ground outdoor pool. They're gonna, if they're taking a fence out and leaving it open, that's an attractive nuisance for children that go to the Qdobas, and there's a possibility of safety issues and things of that nature. I would like to know more of what happened at the meeting and what, if anything, can be done to salvage a fence there. There is an existing fence on the property line. Do they plan to take it out? Are they going to leave it there and add their second fence on their new area? Or are they going to allow an attachment to their new fence with a gate access for their lawn-keeping people so that that pool area is secure as it is now?
Any questions for Ms. Conley? Jason just had a rendition of the landscape, and it does show a fence there.
The fence is on the south side of their buffer zone, and we are on the north side, where the little man is there, the residential area. There's not showing any fence there at all, so there is nothing to preclude anybody from walking down the street or in their yard or their property or the property across the street at Qdoba from seeing the pool there.
Okay, I see what you're talking about.
And I have concerns about.
Right now, there's currently a fence right next to that property line.
Correct, yes.
And that is owned by them?
Yes, it is, although originally it was owned by us.
Okay.
Then the people that had it before Law Motors had a very large dog, and so they built another privacy fence. There was about six, eight inches between our chain link fence and their privacy fence, so with weeds and such, we finally tore down the chain link fence. So they technically own that six-foot privacy fence that's on the property line.
Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate to have the applicant to address their questions?
Yes. Any other questions for Mrs. Conley first, though? Thank you. Could the applicant come up and address those questions, please?
So, yeah, we do have a new six-foot fence. We're actually anxious to get the old fence down, because it is in need of repair, and I'd be happy to keep the 20-foot buffer zone and move the fence to the north if that's what she wanted on that parcel. That's, it makes no difference to us. I'd put it on the property line if you want it.
Got a pool, and you have to have a fence around the pool.
What's that?
When you have a pool, you'd have to have a fence around it for safety-wise, and I think that's what their concern is.
Yeah, and I don't know how to address that, because a pool's not on our property. But I'll move the fence to the north as far as we can move it. That's not, and keep the 20-foot buffer, that's not a problem.
Okay, any other questions? Because that was really only her real concern. Thank you. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak on this issue?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It might be a question for staff then about the ability to keep the fence where it is, or does it have to be set back from the property line?
The way the buffer yard requirements read is it has to be not on the property line, so he can set it back a couple of feet or a foot, is usually what he's done, or people have done before.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? As long as Jason is up. Jason, can you go to the slide, Jason, that has the line that shows the property is along 41st Street? Perfect. So can you tell us a little bit? I mean, we just, not too long ago, we were talking about the Billion lot that, does that go north of that line?
The Billion lot would go quite a ways north of that line. That went to the first street, so it would go all the way up. I think that's 39th Street to the north there.
Okay. And we also, I don't think it's on this side of the street, but the Graham Auto, there was kind of a similar issue where they were tearing down homes to make their lot bigger as well.
Yep.
So is the issue here, I'm just trying to understand the issue of not wanting to go north of the line, or is the recommendation not to go north just to preclude encroachment into the neighborhood?
Yeah, we've tried to, I guess, stayed consistent with what we've heard from neighbors and other people, that they are really concerned about neighborhood encroachment of these commercial properties. That's one of the reasons why we recommend denial of the one, I think you saw either last month or two months ago over by Old Gorman High School. We just tried to stay consistent and say, you know, if there isn't any parcels that go that far into the street or that far into the neighborhood, then we like to try and hold the line. I know Qdoba to the west goes quite a bit farther north, but that was really the only one within that, you know, five or six-block radius. So we've just tried to prevent or be consistent with our recommendation of not allowing the neighborhood creep, and that's really where our recommendation for those two existing homes to be torn down, that's where that's coming from, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Jason a question, too?
Yes.
Could you comment on the landscaping plan and the concept of buffering and what that offers, you know, compared to what's there now even?
Yes, I can. If you look at this area, you can see those two existing garages there, especially the neighbor that came up and spoke with the house that is proposing to be tore down. There's probably 10 feet between those, maybe. They're probably five feet from the property line. Their proposed buffer here will actually give them 20 feet from the edge of their parking lot to the property line of that neighboring residential house to the north. So it'll go from 10 feet apart to roughly 25 feet apart. And the applicant has done a really great job of showing us a landscape buffer concept. I think this is what we envisioned when we actually put those buffer yards in, the fence and then a berm with landscaping on the opposite side of the fence to kind of keep the neighboring property, do not have to see cars and not have to see the fence. They can just look at mature landscaping, so.
Mr. Chair, I have a caution for staff as well.
Okay.
Jason mentioned everything I wanted to on the buffer yard, but it's a good educational point here. This is something that staff really took into consideration when we did the new shaped places. When you look at that exhibit up there, we're buffering per all these developments. The stuff on your left with the commercial development to the property to the east on the right, and you could put the fence, just very possible if the applicant's willing to do that, because that will make the neighbor happy. But you can see, we tried to give the lawn to the residential neighbor. That was the buffer. Look at what most people would say. They get the trees, the shrubs, the lawn, they get all that buffer. When you put the tree on the other side, which is very possible, then the buffer goes all to the commercial development to not, single-family people get a fence. So we left it up to the public testimony, and really, once you got to the development and go, you can put the fence wherever you want, but the benefit here, you can see, is really to that residential person, where they get all the benefit. So that's why I just wanted to try to show planning commission and citizens at home.
Thank you. You have a question for staff?
I just have a question. If we approve the one and deny the second, do we still have to put a buffer yard then? From Area 1 to Area 2, do they now have to add a buffer yard? Or can they maintain the same?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off there. If you approved Area 1 and denied Area 2, that site could continue to look the exact way that it is. If they came back to redevelop it, if they changed their plan and wanted to put a new building and do a new parking area, then they would have to comply with that buffer yard requirements. But as it sits today, it would just stay the same essentially, so.
Any more questions for staff? With that, we're going to close testimony. I need a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve item number 1.
1.
Correct.
Item 17, Area 1.
Yeah, item 17, Area 1.
Yes, I make a motion to approve item 17, Area 1. Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of item 17, Area 1? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, same sign. Item 17, Area 1 is approved.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion for item 17, Area Number 2, for discussion purposes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chair, in my opinion, it makes sense. It looks like it cleans up the site, the developers, it makes sense on the buffer yard, the fencing. It just looks like a good rezone. It makes sense to me. There is other locations that have gone as far as this to the north, as far as the zoning, so I'm in favor of it.
Chair?
Yes.
And I appreciate the thoughts about encroachment into the neighborhood, but if you look at what's currently there, there is no buffer at all. I mean, it's smack dab right up against it. I look at this as less encroachment and more of just providing adequate buffer to the north, so I would support it as well.
I would echo both their comments. I mean, it actually will clean that area up a lot, and I think the neighbors will like what they'll have there. And just looking down the street, I mean, there's commercial stuff all the way down the street that goes a little higher up, so.
And I can appreciate those comments, too, Mr. Chair, but, you know, it still feels like it's encroachment into that neighborhood, and it feels like it's, you know, the first, the Area 1 obviously is not that. That's the way it is now. Area 2 feels like it starts to get in there quite a ways, and I recognize, as we go farther to the west, it's a little deeper into that neighborhood, but that isn't necessarily a factor as we consider things like encroachment in my mind, anyway. So I tend to be opposed to this one.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with you. I mean, I understand that, but with the shaped places and the buffer requirements that are now in place, that gives me even the more confidence that they really are doing what they can to protect those neighborhoods.
I agree, that does help.
Seeing none, all in favor of item 17? Item Number 2, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed? Yes. Motion passes.
Item 18, 4796, 2016, conditional use for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at 2501 West 10th Street.
Jason Bieber again with Planning and Building Services. This is the Detour Bar here on the corner of Kiwanis and 10th Street. The applicant would like to construct roughly a 5 1/2 by 67 1/2-foot covered deck on the north side of the building for some outdoor seating. This proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment does meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan. They are not changing the existing intent of the Detour Bar, but just adding that covered patio on the north side of the property. We did, when they came in for this specific building permit, we did find a conditional use permit from December of 2007. There were several conditions on that, and one of them was to prohibit outdoor seating. So staff did feel that they needed to do another public hearing for a conditional use to see if neighbors could come out and comment or if they had any issues with their current proposed plans to do some outdoor seating. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit without conditions at this time. However, if neighbors' opposition, if there's neighborhood opposition, we would support the adding of the following condition, that they would prohibit outdoor seating, therefore kind of rendering their existing or their proposed patio to be obsolete, so. I'll answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this issue? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
Jim Brunz, 4005 East Tiger Lily Street.
Anything to add?
No, basically what we're doing is we're adding a patio on the north side, which basically faces 10th Street, which is kind of the commercial, you know, thoroughfare there. When we developed this several years ago, we had a bar that went in there, and there's apartments to the rear of this, and the question came up about outdoor seating, and we talked about it, and at that time, there was no plans to do that, to put outdoor seating in the back of the building, and so we just added that stipulation. It was a recommendation, and there was really no opposition from neighbors at that time. It was just something that came up, and we weren't planning on it, so we added that note. It wasn't a big deal. Several years later, we got a bar under the Detour, they're doing well. They got a great clientele. It's really cleaned up that area. It's a much different bar than the one that was there. The owners there, they're doing a really good job as far as running it, and it's clean, and their patrons are asking for some outdoor seating, and so that's what we're doing, is we're here to ask for that, and it'll look nice and be a good addition to that area.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Brunz?
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue?
Motion for approval?
Testimony, okay. You're a little early, but that's okay. Testimony closed. I need a motion for approval?
Motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of item 18, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, same sign. Item 18 passes.
Item 19, 4833, 2016, conditional use for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within 500 feet of a sensitive land use located at south of West 55th Street and east of South Louise Avenue.
The applicant here plans to open a Pancharo's Grill within the recently constructed retail strip center here just east of Spazia. The aerial obviously is an old aerial. Those buildings have been removed, and they have constructed a strip center similar to the one that's on the corner there. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan. Alcohol sales will be a minor portion of this proposed business for Pancharo's Grill. Further, obviously, several other businesses along 57th and Louise here already have alcohol sales. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
My name is Ben Miller. I'm filling in for Patchak Miller, Vice President of Brita Brothers Incorporated, which will be the owners of Pancharo's Mexican Grill. It is a requirement from our corporate franchise that we sell imported or domestic beers there, and they obtain a small percentage of our sales.
Any questions from the commissioners? Petitioner?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve. Item 19?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes?
Yes.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion, or item nineteen passes.
Item twenty, forty-eight thirty-four, twenty sixteen, conditional use permit for a full-service restaurant within two hundred and fifty feet of a sensitive land use located at sixteen oh-one South Sycamore Avenue.
The applicant for this petition is Jeff Pierce with Hy-Vee. He's requesting a conditional use to allow for accessory on-sale alcohol adjacent to sensitive use. This is to serve beer and wine at their New Market Grill located within the store on Sycamore Avenue. In the report, it notes the abutting land use and the compatibility to the north and west as a one because the single-family residential and moderate-density apartments. If this project was in the process of being rezoned for the grocery store, it would be considered highly incompatible adjacent to single-family. Because this is an application for a conditional use permit, staff does recommend approval. The conditional use permit standard for on-sale alcohol beverage establishments requires the following. The on-sale alcohol establishment must have all parking spaces within the onsite parking lot in close proximity and facing the entrance. Two, lighting may be considered to provide illumination for security and safety of parking access areas. On-site lighting plans must be submitted for review and approval. Three, soundproofing may be considered to prevent noise and vibrations from penetrating into surrounding properties or leased space. And four, a security management plan shall be provided to the police department. The residential land use to the north has an approximate hundred-foot landscape buffer. This was not a requirement, but the Hy-Vee store did put that in to buffer any developing residential to the north at the time that they built this store. It's a reasonable separation from what we would consider incompatible use for the on-sale alcohol at the restaurant. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the external effects of the full-service restaurant, and they're directed away from the single-family residences, staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit. I can answer any questions you might have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here?
He is out of Des Moines. I didn't know if he was going to have somebody from the local store here, but the applicant is located in Des Moines, so apparently not here.
Okay. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this issue? Okay, with that, testimony's closed then.
Mr. Chair, I'm not comfortable approving something without the applicant here, so I'll move to defer until our next planning commission meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to defer because the applicant's not here. All in favor, I guess signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty has been deferred to next month.
Item twenty-one, forty-eight sixty-four, twenty sixteen, conditional use permit for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use located at thirty-one oh-one West Forty-first Street.
The applicant for this petition is Jennifer Kelly with Coda LLC, requesting a conditional use permit to allow for accessory on-sale alcohol in the RE4 form within one hundred feet of residential. This is to serve beer and wine at Fierro's Pizza located at thirty-one oh-one West Forty-first Street. This will be a new location for them. The restaurant is located just south of Forty-first, where Orgorman Middle and High School are located to the north there. The conditional use permit standard for on-sale alcohol beverage establishments have the same requirements that I read in the previous report, so I'm not going to reiterate those unless you have a question on it. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval for this conditional use permit. I can take any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here?
Hello, Jennifer Kelly, two-twelve South Phillips Avenue, and we would just like to expand our beverage line, that's all.
Okay. Any questions of the petitioner from the commissioners? Thank you, Jennifer.
One quick question. Is this facility open already, or is it?
Yeah, we're just not serving. There's a fudrucker right in front of us, and they're serving, and we have Olive Garden on the other side as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve item twenty-one.
Second.
All in favor of item twenty-one, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty-one passes.
Item twenty-two, forty-eight sixty-five, twenty sixteen, conditional use permit for accessory alcoholic beverage establishment within one hundred feet of a sensitive land use located at fifty-fifteen South Western Avenue.
The applicant here is Kenneth Voss. The applicant would like to offer wine during some special events he's going to have in his new boutique. He's indicating roughly three to four events will take place per year. They are looking at going in the tenant space just to the north of Oh My Cupcakes in there. And just to note, the previous tenant also had an on-sale license for a similar idea of having special events for wine, so. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment does meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan. The boutique will offer complimentary wine to customers roughly three to four times per year at special events. Further, there are others, several other boutiques within the multi-tenant building that offer wine and beer during special events. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item?
Mr. Chair? Justin, so that's their plan is three to four. Justin, sorry.
It happens.
You'll probably get confused with your brother there all the time.
Yes.
Sorry, Jason.
It happens.
And now I lost my train of thought. So their plan is three to four times a year. What does the permit actually get them?
Well, the conditional use just allows them to use the on-sale use there, and then if they are approved for their wine license through the city council, they could serve it all the time if they wanted to, so.
Thank you, I was just curious. And sorry.
Any other questions? Jason? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
Hi, Ken Voss, twenty-seven one oh-three, four eightieth Harrisburg, South Dakota. Prepare to take any questions.
Anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions from commissioners of Kenneth? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience like to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Second. I have a motion and a second for item twenty-two. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty-two passes.
Item twenty-three, forty-eight sixty-six, twenty sixteen, conditional use permit for on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment within five hundred feet of a sensitive land use located at fifty-four fifteen West Forty-first Street.
The applicant here is Steve Schroeder. It's located in the Clock Tower Strip Center on the southwest corner of Forty-first and Marion Road. The applicant is proposing to finish a tenant space for their Connection Two Casino in the existing Clock Tower Retail Center. The proposed on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment meets the criteria of the comprehensive plan. The Clock Tower Retail Center has had several on-sale alcohol uses along with restaurants and other retail uses within this strip center. Because the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Thank you. Is the petitioner here?
Paul Reynolds, RCM Services, forty-four oh-two, South Technology.
Anything to add?
Any questions? No, I do not.
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Reynolds? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience like to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve item twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Sorry.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty-three passes.
Item twenty-four, forty-six seventy-eight, twenty sixteen, alternative site plan for an alternative buffer yard located at fifty-eight hundred South Bonson Avenue.
The applicant here is Dick Dempster. This is located at the new Horizon Harrisburg Elementary School. The applicant is proposing to provide the buffer yard requirements along a portion of South Bonson Avenue and East Brewster Street in a different way than the ordinance requires because of a geothermal heating and cooling system that was installed in the northwest corner of this property. This heating system does not allow the placement of trees above it, and this is the site plan of the Horizon Elementary School that I believe is slated to be open here in fall of this year. A Level B buffer yard is required along roughly two hundred feet of South Bonson Avenue and along the entire East Brewster Street. This buffer yard requires a fifteen-foot setback, two-foot berm or four-foot fence, and thirty units of landscaping per every one hundred lineal feet. The site plan does indicate an increased buffer yard setback from the fifteen-foot minimum to thirty-five feet in some, and in some areas well over a hundred feet, as you can kind of see on the site plan. The applicant is proposing to place seven deciduous shade trees in the right-of-way instead of the buffer yard because of that geothermal heating and system in the northwest corner of the property. Further, they are proposing to place roughly eighty-three coral forster perennials within this area, and the total number of landscape units, as indicated on the plan, is roughly two hundred and sixteen, excuse me, three hundred and forty-seven units and the required two hundred and sixty-two point five. Also, the plan does indicate additional interior trees to help screen the parking areas from neighboring residential properties. The applicant plans to increase the required buffer yard setbacks and provide additional landscape units, which should meet the intent of the Level B buffer yard requirements. Further, the proposed landscaping should also provide the necessary screening from the proposed turnaround areas and existing parking lot from the neighboring residential areas to the west and to the north. Finally, the proposed trees in the right-of-way should still provide the intent of the front yard landscaping along South Bonson Avenue. If this application is approved, the applicant can construct the required Level B buffer yard and place trees in the right-ofways as indicated on this submitted landscape plan in front of you. If this application is denied, the applicant would then probably have to cluster the landscape units outside of the geothermal area along the other areas along South Bonson Avenue and East Brewster Street, and outside that northwest area with the geothermal heating and cooling system. Because the subject application should meet the intent of the buffer yard and landscaping requirements within the shaped places zoning ordinance, staff does recommend approval of this application, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff on this item? Thank you, Jason. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, I'm Steve Jastrum with Architecture Incorporated, four fifteen South Main. The only thing I want to add to it is the original drawings submitted for the project back when the project was designed, we had enough room for our geothermal wells and the buffer yards, and everything was good, until we started drilling the holes for the geothermal wells, which were designed to be two hundred feet deep. We hit bedrock at about one fifty, and one forty to one sixty is where all of our, we couldn't go any deeper, which meant we needed more geothermal wells. And based on that, we were landlocked, and we are requesting now the alternative buffer design because we found rock. We didn't hit oil, but we found rock. Any questions that you may have?
Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Demp, or Mr. Jastrum?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone from the audience here would like to address this item? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve item twenty-four.
Motion for approval.
Second. All in favor of item twenty-four, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Item twenty-four passes.
Item twenty-five, forty-eight fifty-six, twenty sixteen, initial development plan amendment for the University of Sioux Falls Institutional Campus Plan Unit Development located at eleven oh-one West Twenty-second Street.
The applicant for this petition is Stacy McMahon with Coke Hazard Architects. She's requesting an amendment for the USF Initial Development Plan that was approved in April. The amendment is to allow for dwelling units on the first floor of the dormitories. The existing residence hall at the northeast corner of the campus will be raised to accommodate a new dormitory and parking. There are other dormitories on campus they may be adding on or replacing in the future, so this amendment would allow for that as well. As noted in the initial development plan, the applicant will need to relocate sanitary sewer at this location to accommodate the development. Private water mains, excuse me, private water mains on campus may need to be adjusted. Fire hydrants, fire access, and fire sprinkler systems may need to be added depending on the type of development, either at this location or others, for future development on campus. There should not be any increase in impervious areas, so detention and post-construction BMPs will not be required. Storm runoff should be captured in storm sewers to remove overland flow. A traffic study is not required for this amendment or the final development plan for the residence hall, but may be required for other developments on the campus in the future. Because the subject application for the University of Sioux Falls Initial Development Plan Amendment is consistent with the required standards for the S-two PUD, and the proper land use transitions will still exist, and the final development plan requirements will be reviewed at the time of supplemental for each individual building to minimize negative effects, staff recommends approval of this request. I can answer any questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions of staff? I have one. Will this require any additional parking because now they're going to have student housing at the lower level?
I think what they have for their existing is probably, it is on the first level as well as it exists. This is replacing. I'd have to double-check the number of units, but they are accommodating with the parking that you see on the plan, both at the corner and then further to the south there along Prairie. And they will have to meet minimum standards, although with the S-two PUD, they can do shared parking on the entire campus, and we've reviewed all of that, and they do provide the necessary parking.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Diane. Is the petitioner here?
Good evening, I'm not Stacy McMahon. My name is Marsha Denniston, and I serve as the Vice President for Business and Finance at the University of Sioux Falls, and I will be very willing to answer any questions. I will comment that our original plans included students living on the first floor of the residence hall, but that was apparently omitted from the first planned or the first presentation, so we're not proposing to increase the number of students beyond what our original intention was.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone from the audience like to address this item?
Motion for approval.
I have a motion and approval for item twenty-five. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All opposed, same sign. Motion twenty-five passes. Any new business?
Move to adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.